Welcome to Politics Not Included, where we get to know the person, not their policy. We're creating a space to have real conversations with your elected officials and election candidates to get to know them as a person first. We're hoping these conversations will make it easier to approach and engage your local leadership. Now, before we get started with today's episode, I have a couple of ground rules to cover as always. The first is Politics Not Included is hosted by the Transparent Campaign Initiative. And in the spirit of transparency, these episodes will be published without being edited. And we're doing this to keep this platform neutral and authentic to all of the guests that we have on the show. Now, what that means for you as a listener, or a viewer if you're on our YouTube channel, is that you may witness or hear longer pauses than anticipated, or some bloopers, or stumbling over words. And that's because you're watching or listening to this conversation as if it were live. You're hearing the whole thing in its entirety. And I'm excited to get to share these conversations with you in a true and authentic form. And that leads me to rule number two. That as you're watching or listening to this, if you have any comments that creep up in your head that if you were sitting in this room with us, you may not have the confidence to say to our face, or you may not feel like the best human being if you did. I'm going to ask you to keep that in your head and out of the comments. And that's because we're just trying to have conversations to get to strengthen our community and to build each other up, rather than tear each other down. And in order to do that, I think we need to keep the comments kind. Now that all of that is out of the way, let's get this show started. Just one note before we get started with today's episode. All Manhattan City Commission candidates have been invited to appear as a guest on Politics Not Included. Today, we're joined by Amber Starling. Amber is founder and owner of Good Witch Cleaning Services. Amber is also a candidate for the Manhattan City Commission election this November. Amber, welcome to Politics Not Included.
Thank you. It's really nice to meet you.
Yeah, I'm excited to have you here, dive into some of your backgrounds, get to know you a little bit better, and kind of learn the different experiences that have shaped you as a person today.
Thank you.
So, to get us started, let's go way back to the beginning. Can you tell us where you're from?
I'm originally from Tallahassee, Florida. I grew up, like, I've kind of gone over this in my campaign, but I grew up in poverty. My grandma had a lot to do with raising me. She was a sharecropper in Arkansas during the Great Depression. That was her childhood.
Wow.
So yeah, I've learned a lot of practicality. We had like a little self-sustaining farm. And so, it was kind of weird growing up because for a long time, I didn't realize how poor we were. Because I was like, oh, well, that just, poor means that you're missing meals. And thanks to her and her canning and everything else, like, we always had enough food.
Yeah, that's a really interesting perspective. And I'm kind of glad you bring it up because I'd love to hear a little bit more about how some of those experiences shaped you are today. Obviously, you have a really strong work ethic. You've started a company from the ground up, and it's a very successful business now. Are you, can you share a little bit about some of the things that you feel like may have given you those core values that you have today?
Yeah, so it wasn't just grandma. I also grew up in an entrepreneur family. My granddaddy started Tallahassee Paint and Body, and then my dad and uncle picked it up from there. So summers were spent either weeding a garden or occasionally getting to play with the air tools, which was always really fun as a kid. Like, power tools are one thing, air tools are something else, baby. But yeah, we learned how to work really hard. We learned how to, you know, take a goal and go after it. The way that I understand the difference between wants and needs as a business owner and as a prospective politician are real and visceral because we really had to learn how to make those distinctions really early on in life. So I've always been told that, you know, I was like an old soul. And I'm like, yeah, that's just because I grew up poor.
Yeah. And so, you mentioned having several jobs before you moved to Manhattan. Were those jobs that you had in Tallahassee, you think there was like a, you worked for a law firm and...
Tallahassee and the Monticello area. I really, it's this tiny little town. There's more cows than humans in that county.
Yeah.
It was rather charming. I loved it there. And yeah, so I worked, I worked at a real estate office. I got my real estate license. I wasn't able to really pursue it. And I also had to stop my firefighting career as well after I shattered my pelvis in a motorcycle accident in like 21. Yeah, it was a great time for everybody.
Yeah.
It wasn't, um, so like, that kind of changed the trajectory of my life. I really liked, like, when I got on at the law firm, basically what he told me was like, hey, I'm about two years from retiring, so the less you ask me questions, the more money I'll pay you. And I was like, oh, heard. Yeah, so I'm just going to, I just need to pick this up really fast. And so, yeah, I was able to, like, I brought a lot to the table. My ex-husband, we were babies when we got married. Don't get married in your twenties. It's stupid.
Yeah.
You're, you're just children. It's okay. You think you're grown up, you're not grown up, you're children. But yeah, so we ended up here at Fort Riley. And so, it was kind of hard at first because I had started working when I was 14. I was usually working two jobs at a time. And so, like, getting up here and just like looking for a job full-time while not actually working on it drove me up a wall.
Yeah.
Yeah, so eventually, after like seven months of looking for a job and getting told over and over like, well, you have great experience, but you don't have a lot of education. And that was because like, I got a really great scholarship to a private university in Florida, at Stetson University. And so, like, even with $36,000 a year in scholarship, I was still ending up $10,000 a year in debt with a journalism degree. And so, I, I just looked at it and I was like, hmm, this math is not mathing. I don't think I will ever be able to pay $40,000 in debt off as a journalist. I should probably not go through with this. So, it was kind of that mismatch of experience and education. And so, eventually, I was like, fine, if you guys won't hire me, I will hire myself.
Yeah.
And I did, yeah.
That's great. It's a really inspiring story too. So when you and your husband, ex-husband moved here, did you move from Florida here? Were there other stops along the way?
No, so there were no other stops along the way. We moved straight here. I still remember the first time I ever saw snow. It was, it's a core memory, yeah. I was like in my pajamas and bathrobe, and I came downstairs and it was snowing. I, like, barefoot, I just ran outside and I was like, oh my God, this is the coolest thing ever. I also remember the second time it snowed where I was in my pajamas and my robe, and I came downstairs and I just stood at the back door and I was like, hmm, very pretty to look at, very, very hurty if you touch.
Yeah, you learn quickly.
You learn quickly. I was just sitting there with my coffee and I was like, yeah, no, it's, it's better from here sometimes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And what was the volunteer firefighting experience? Like, what called you to be a volunteer firefighter?
Yeah, so I was a journalist at the time, and I was just running around town, doing, just trying to see who I could interview, just like human interest stories and stuff. And so, I stopped in this adorable little antique store. And this wonderful lady Lynn Long was working at that day. And she said, well, I'm shy and you don't want to do a story about me, but my husband is on the volunteer department, and they're getting a new fire engine in a couple days. He's going to come here for lunch. So, you know, would you, would you just stay for a few minutes so you can meet him? And that was the day I met Mike Long. He, so, he tried to get me to join and I laughed it off because I was like, yeah, no, I'm like, at the time, I was like 115 pounds soaking wet. I'm scared of heights. I had a healthy fear of fire. Like, I'm obviously not your best recruit. And so, when the truck came in, I was just taking pictures and interviewing people. He kept, you know, like, trying to get me to, to go and experience it. And so, they were short on volunteers that night. I was just like, you know what? Yeah, I'll help you guys load hoes. And I, I just fell in love with it. I couldn't help it. The minute I was on a truck, I was like, no, this is actually really cool. I'm feeling really called to do this. And yeah, so I got into the academy. We worked really, really hard. So, we were lucky because Mike was the one who taught the first class of female firefighters in the US.
Oh, cool.
So I got to learn from him. And so, when they did it, they realized that the way that male firefighters were doing it, they were just like, you know, tossing a ladder up on their shoulder, tossing it up against the wall. And they were like, okay, well, how can we get these smaller bodies to be able to do it? The answer, obviously, is body mechanics. That's what they did. And so, after a few years of those female firefighters being in service, the national kind of looked at it and they're like, why is their injury rate so much lower? Because they weren't doing stupid things. Because they were using their body effectively and not just, you know, like throwing their whole back out.
Manhandling it and powering through, yeah.
Mm-hmm, so yeah, it was really cool to be able to learn from him. And then, after I got out of the academy, we all, we, my group that trained under Mike, we graduated very much top of that class. And then, we, so, one of my fellow volunteers that was in that graduating class, we became lieutenants and assistants to Mike. He was the assistant chief and then, he was overtraining. So I also then, after I was done, trained a class of firefighters as well. And getting like 17-year-old boys to learn to be adults in dangerous situations was definitely a challenge.
Yeah, an experience. Yeah, that's a really interesting kind of trajectory. That was never on your radar and you just threw one interaction.
Yeah.
Had a meaningful impact on your life. So were you doing that full-time? Like, this is, I don't have knowledge of volunteer versus full-time.
Yeah, so, we had a small department. So we were pretty much on call 24/7. Sometimes, you know, you would just like communicate ahead of time and be like, hey, it's my birthday today and I am not going to answer the radio if it goes off. But I was still, even then, like, very much a go-getter. So there were, I would go months at a time just being on call.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, so when you moved here, so you went to Stetson University while you're in Florida. And then, when you moved here, that's when you started looking for jobs and you just like, weren't able to find.
Weren't able to find it, yeah. Yeah, seven years of office experience, five years of experience, including on the front lines, and like, a high school diploma.
Yeah. And then that's when you decided, okay, I'm going to start my own business. So tell us a little bit about what sparked that and like, where did cleaning, like a cleaning service come into play? Like, how did all the things come together for you to start Good Witch?
Yeah, so, as somebody who is Scotch-Irish, stubbornness and spite goes a really long way, fantastic motivator. So yeah, just like that idea of like, well, if you're not going, if somebody's not going to hire me, then I'm going to hire myself. And so, I kind of looked in the market and cleaning is low barrier to entry. You don't need a lot to get started. But what that also means is that like, in the area, there weren't a lot of very above-board outfits. So there were a whole bunch of solo cleaners that weren't bonded or insured, just like, you know, Care.com. And then there was a second class up higher that were solo cleaners who did actually carry the insurance and everything. They were taking it really seriously. But they could really only handle so many clients. And you moved up and then you got to people who were kind of running, and there's still a lot in our market, kind of fly-by-nights. And they, you know, like, they have employees and they have insurance, but they're not actually employees. They're misclassified as contractors. And so, the insurance doesn't actually cover them. And like, that gets all weird. And then you have like, that top level is just like bonded and insured companies with employees, not subcontractors. They bring their own supplies. They're professional. And so, I made it into that top category pretty quickly after I figured out what the categories were. And then, what I did was I was like, okay, well, how do we make a fifth category and force the market to compete? And so, that's when I went and I looked into getting some of the training that we got. So the house cleaning technician certification. I was the first person in the state of Kansas with it. So like, our industry is kind of weird. We have, you know, like highly regulated side, which is, you know, like fire, smoke, and mold remediation trauma scene cleanup because we know that mold and bloodborne pathogens can actually kill you. And then, the residential side of our industry is unregulated. So from the residential side of our industry, like, not a lot of people go all the way over here to get the house cleaning technician certification. And so, I went a step even further than that. So I came up here to this part of the industry, took five more classes, completed my journeyman and became a master textile cleaner. So in the residential side of our industry, there's only two of us in the world. It's me and then the guy who wrote the class, the textbook, and the exam.
Okay, yeah, that's a, that's a lot to unpack there.
Isn't it? Yeah, no. Again, like, I just like, I never do anything halfway. It's kind of obvious.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, getting started, so you start, you have, I read somewhere that you had like $100 worth of cleaning supplies and it was yourself and you're ready to do this.
Yeah.
How do you first figure out how to enter, like, how do you get a client? What are some of the challenges that you faced when you were first starting and then overcame?
So I posted on Facebook. It's funny because like, we started out, I started out just with this like, very specific offer. It was a $99 whole-house special. Yeah, and so, I got all sorts. I got families who were just on a budget and they appreciated it. I had people who were, you know, maybe they didn't value cleaning as much, so they thought that it was a lot easier than it was and thought that, you know, $100 should have gone a lot farther. It was, it was a spread. And so, yeah, that's how I started, just on Facebook. I was, I had gone, started going back to college at Barton. And so, I was nannying for two families. I had one in the morning. And then, I would pick the girls up in the afternoon after school. In the middle, I went to Barton and I was taking accelerated classes. So there, it was a six-week semester. And then, after I was done with the girls, I would go pick up my middle schooler after basketball practice and either watch his basketball game and embarrass him in front of his friends, which is ideal, let me tell you. Oh my God, it was great. Or just go ahead and take him home. I would be cooking dinner and working on my homework and his homework at the same time. And then, I would go home to my house around nine and then also make dinner. So I was just like, running.
Yeah, all the time.
All the time.
And then, you added this to it.
Yes, yeah. And so, yeah, that's why I ended up dropping out of Barton is I was like, oh wow, okay, well, you know, like, when the school year is over and I don't have these families anymore. And I also, you know, I also have the business expanding. I'm, I came to a decision point. And then, the decision was to pursue the business instead of finishing my education.
And then, as you're starting, you mentioned a lot of tiers and layers and a lot of the technical stuff behind it. I imagine that going into that, that's, like, anytime you're entering something new like that, those are things that you learn over time? Is that just stuff that you learned through conversations? Or how did you figure out what, like, you've specialized, you've gone through these classes and you have the licensing and that's what sets you apart? How did you gather that information and then decide that that was going to be important to you?
Yeah, so part of it was, as a young adult, getting a smartphone for the first time, I recognized that I didn't have to wonder about things anymore. I could just open up my phone and look it up. And so, that was part of it. Another part of it is I just have just a very strategic mind. And then, other parts of it is, you know, once I, I'm always looking for unknown unknowns. Like, what, what in this situation am I completely unaware of? And don't even know to look for. And so, I was able to get into a couple of classes that like, I invested in myself as an entrepreneur. There is an angel investor here in town, Jeff Keenig, and he's, he did an H2D class is what he called it. And then, I also got into the SBA Emerging Leaders Program, which is a mini MBA. So I was able to really, because I was willing to seek out those unknown unknowns and just like, always, I don't want to be the smartest person in the room. If I look around and recognize that I'm the smartest person in the room, I leave and go find another room that makes me feel stupid.
Yeah, that's a really great approach to constantly be learning and learning from those around you. And obviously, it suited you well because it's been eight years now since you've started. And you've grown, I read in a report earlier, you have 11 employees in a physical location in town.
Yeah, we're out off of Houston Street, which was awful this winter, by the way, because they were working on the entire, the entire sewer system all winter long.
Yeah.
It's over now, thank God.
Yeah.
But yeah, no.
And...
Definitely interesting.
So you've talked a little bit about some of the things that you've done to set yourself apart. What are some of the challenges that you've overcome with having employees and running a business as it grows and keeping up with the growth? Because you also have locations, you have service other locations, not just Manhattan, is that right?
Yeah, so we serve from Wimigo, St. George, Manhattan, Ogden, Fort Riley, and Junction City. We've had a wider service area before as gas prices increased. And I didn't have service providers that lived further out. We've kind of shrunk that circle a little bit to fit with what the company can do. And so, that was something, that was a challenge that we had to learn to overcome. Is that one of the things that kills small businesses most frequently is not not growing, it's growing too fast. So there were a couple of times where we grew too fast. And like, even Starbucks did that. So they actually, if you remember back in like, the 20 teens, they shut down all of the Starbucks's in every location. And they were just like, nope, we're doing an entire retraining day. Everybody is retraining on the drinks. And so, there were a couple of times where like, you know, I was able to sell really quickly. I was able to hire really quickly, but our training program wasn't what it is today. And so, they weren't replicating the same results that I was able to attain. And so, that meant that like, you know, when that blew up in my face, I had to be like, oh, okay, I got to scale back again. Yeah, and so, one of the things I do for fun is archery. And one of the things that's taught me is, instead of, instead of looking at how close the arrow landed towards the bullseye, pay attention to where the arrow landed because that's telling you what you need to change. Like, oh, it's high and to the right. That means that I'm doing this with my body and I needed to correct it. So instead of just focusing on like, how far are we from perfection? Like, what is the result that I'm getting telling me about my approach? And what can I change about it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's an interesting perspective. And I remember the Starbucks thing, their former CEO and founder wrote a book about that time. And I kind of forget some of the details, but it's interesting you brought that up as kind of a model recognizing that something's not going right and how can we correct it to keep things on track?
Well, and since then, we have built in, so we have not just our, like, in-house training, where you're actually going out with a team member and learning hands-on. We actually have an entire self-paced online academy for our, our training that you can do ahead of time. So that you're getting familiar with the chemicals and the processes and everything else. And that's been very, very valuable as well.
Yeah, and I, I read, correct me if I'm wrong, that some of that training was about which chemicals to use and how they interact with surfaces and those types of things.
Yeah.
Why is that so important to you to have your team do that and go through that process?
So, some people learn how to clean on TikTok University. Please, God, just don't go to the cleaning TikTok. It's, it's the shadowy side symbol. We'd never go there because you're learning how to mix chemicals and you shouldn't do that. And there are lots of surfaces that we have in homes now that can be damaged if you use the wrong chemistry. So marble, for example, and granite can be damaged by acidic things. And then, they can be damaged, for example, by like dish soap. So Dawn dish soap has what's called a chelating agent in it. And what it does is it softens the water, like, it gathers up the minerals in the water to make it softer, which makes the product more bubbly. And so, for the customer, you look at it and you're like, wow, this is great soap. It's so bubbly. But those chelating agents don't know the difference between minerals and water and the minerals on top of your counter. So if you end up with dish soap on your counter and you come by and it dries and then you feel it later, it will feel kind of grainy. That's because it's messing up the surface.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This explains so much. Okay, near my sink. I've learned something and I'm going to take this away.
It's the splashy bit.
Is there a way to fix it? Because like, near my sink, where we have our soap is that way. It's like, because we have granite and it's, it's exactly that way. And it, it does look like the surface of that area is damaged.
Yeah, it's called micro etching. The only way to fix it is to repolish the granite, which is massively expensive. You can start by just keeping your soap in a dish. Even like the pump soap on like a little plater dish or something so that it's less likely to come in contact with the countertop. And then, you've got to like, when you're done cleaning, because sometimes when you're washing dishes, it does splash around the sink. You have to dry it off and wipe it out, yeah.
Yeah, this is great. I've, I've looked at that spot and I've tried to clean it so many times. This is happening right here, so.
Well, and like nowadays, some of the oven finishes you can't use Easy Off on. And they look exactly like the oven you had in college and you could do whatever you want to. But now, if you spray it in as little as one application, especially on the steam clean ovens, it will destroy the finish in one application. So like, a $4 can of spray can cost you a $2,800 oven. And I feel like maybe everybody should know that.
Yeah, everybody should know that. These are things that I wish I knew. Just buy different stuff. I'm like, oh, this seems like it'll work.
Yeah, and like, everything's on page 17 of your owner's manual. I've made it to page eight of an owner's manual and I've tried very, very hard, but I have never made it to page 17.
I've, I've never made it to page eight, so good for you. So what does a day in your life look like today?
Today, okay, yeah. So, I wake up, I go to work. My mornings always involve lots of coffee.
Yeah, necessities.
For real. I, so like, at work, I usually do bids in the morning. So even though I'm not running the entire business day-to-day, I have a fantastic team. Super shout-out to DJ, who is the best director of operations that has ever existed on the face of this planet. She is absolutely amazing. Like, she holds down the fort. She manages the schedule. There's a lot of emotional intelligence that goes into that. And it can be super draining because you're balancing the needs of over 70 clients, 11 employees, and all of their kids, and all of their band recitals, and all of that. So like, I, I couldn't run for office. If I were also doing her job, I would die. Just frankly. In fact, there was a point in my life that I did almost die from doing too much. The burnout led to anxiety. I was having like multiple panic attacks a day. I was waking up at four o'clock in the morning to a panic attack, vomiting for four hours, and then like going to work and just like working a 12-hour day. Eventually, I got down to like 117 pounds. I was a size two, which I never want to be again. And like, I actually understand the feeling of when your body starts to eat itself. And it's very unsettling. Zero out of 10, burnout will kill you. I try to tell people that as much as possible. And I've done, I've been a paid speaker at our trade association a couple of times, talking about like, how to actually work with millennials and Gen Z because it's not that difficult. And then, also how burnout will actually kill you and you need to take it seriously. But yeah, so after I do bids in the morning and take care of my stuff as far as like sales and social media goes, the afternoons are usually for the campaigns, whether it's social media or building out materials like door hangers and stuff, going knocking doors, working with my campaign team. In the evenings, I usually have something going on. So I am this, I'm on the governing board for Indivisible MHK. So it's nonpartisan. A lot of what we're doing right now, like, it, it varies. We have education workshops. We have a community garden that was going all summer and we were able to donate food to, it was like 30 or so families. And then, some of it, we also just took straight to the breadbasket, which was amazing. We have been doing and organizing a lot of protests as well because the way that most people in the organization see it, like, we're outside of the democratic process right now in a really concerning way. I would like to go back to the point because like, the polarization has gone like really bad. I'd like to get to the point where we can just like, all be in the same room yelling about it again because that was way, way better than being in our own camps and not talking to each other.
Yeah, an echo chamber.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and yeah, like social media is really good at making big giant echo chambers for us. Um, so a lot of times in the afternoons, I'm either doing community organizing, um, or working on the campaign or sometimes working late at work. Um, we're pretty flexible with our team members. We actually recognize that it's really hard to be working class right now and sometimes things happen. Uh, and like, it's not entirely uncommon for me to just like pick up somebody's shift and go scrub a toilet. Um, and that's always been something that's really important to me, like nobody at Goodwich, whether you're in the office or not, like nobody at Goodwich is too good to scrub a toilet because this is a cleaning company. Um, and yeah, like that, you can't have that mindset. Um, I do try and, uh, also have fun. Uh, I find that if I go to take a walk or I go, uh, shoot the bow for twenty, thirty minutes or I paint, that's another one of my, uh, hobbies. And I'll send you some of my work later because I'm kind of proud of a couple of the pieces I put out lately. Yeah, um, so yeah, so I do try and like bring some balance in because again, I know what happens when you don't.
Yeah, the time for yourself, even if it's only twenty to thirty minutes a day and just take that time is so important. So it's, I appreciate you talking about that time in your life. It was really hard and overwhelming and working so much that it puts you in that state. Yeah. Because, yeah, that's a, it's a hard place to be and to have a community, it sounds like you've brought the right people into your life to help with that and recognizing taking some time for yourself is really important.
It's so important, yeah. Even if it's like, yeah, fifteen, twenty minutes at a time, you have to do it.
Yeah.
Um, one of the things that DJ does, even in the middle of the day, she'll call it horizontal time. She's just like, I'm gonna go lay on the floor in the commercial janitorial room for fifteen minutes and play phone games because my brain needs a break. And I'm like, oh, I can do that. Like that can be what taking a break looks like.
Yeah, something that's gets you unplugged for a little bit and out of the commotion. And you've also started the free store. So what is the free store?
Yeah.
And tell us all the things about it.
I used to actually have an office in Goodwich, uh, like CEO's office with a door. It was kind of cool. But I also recognized that that space was super underutilized. So we do a lot of, uh, organizing and like decluttering jobs. And when we do them, we were finding that people were tired of donating things to Goodwill because there's not really a lot of good left in Goodwill. Um, they, first off, they way overcharge for things. I have pictures where, you know, it was the original, like it still has its original tags on it. Here's what it costs at the mall originally. Here's what it was marked down to at the mall. Here's what it was marked down to again and then bought for. And then the price that Goodwill has it at is more than what they originally charged at the mall.
Wow.
Which is crazy to me. Um, and so if they were doing that and treating their employees very well, then I would probably be fine with it, but they're not. They're bringing people in, they're paying them very close to minimum wage or minimum wage. Um, and then, you know, they'll promise them forty hours a week and they'll be averaging eleven. You can't pay your bills on that. And so, you know, I had these customers who were tired of giving things to this, uh, organization. I had my team members and I didn't feel great about it either. And so we were like, well, what other options exist? Um, and there are some other options to be able to get free things in town. They're kind of limited. Um, again, be, when it's a free store, it can be really hard to have a space for it because it doesn't generate money to pay rent.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we took out my office. Um, I work either in like a common coworking office with my other team members. Or I often go out to the break room because our, our little office has no windows in it and it drives me up a wall. Um, so yeah, I often sit in the break room just so that I can have the light coming in from the door.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, and then, uh, so like at first, the free store was in our office. Um, and so we have this little closet that's accessible from the hallway and we were using that to warehouse our, uh, like things that had donations that had come in, um, but hadn't been sorted yet. Um, and so that model worked in some ways, however. Um, what it meant was that because the free store itself was in our office, we had to have volunteers there for it to be open. We also ran into the, the issue that we weren't really expecting, which was the community loved it more than we expected, sooner than we expected. So the donations were flowing in fast, um, to the point that most of the time the closet was completely full and it was starting to spill into the hallway of the business. And my team members who are actually paying the rent for that space are having to like kind of navigate through it just to be able to do their jobs. Um, and so my partner looked at me and he was like, you guys are too close to the problem to see the solution. Uh, what you need to do is swap them. And I was like, cool, I hate you because I should have been able to see that and I'm gonna be a baby about it, but you're right. Um, so we did switch them. We, the larger room inside, we're able to use for those donations that come in. And when we get overwhelmed by them, we can shut the door. It's great. Um, everybody probably has a room in their house where they just shut the door because it's what we call a doom room. It's usually like the guest bedroom that also doubles as, you know, the unfinished project.
Yeah, the closet of the guest room is always a scary place.
Yes, correct, yeah. Um, so yeah, we're able to like accept more donations and sort them in a way that's, uh, a lot easier to work with. And then we're also able to keep the closet open considerably more hours, uh, with not even a fraction of the amount of volunteers. Because the building doors, uh, are electronic. My landlord installed awesome electronic locks. And so they're open eight AM to eight PM, like Monday through Friday and then, uh, the afternoons on the weekend. So we're able to just keep the door open. People have been very respectful of the space. Um, even if some people come in and just like tear it up a bit, somebody else will always come in just to guess and like put things back on the hangers, um, which is really, really nice.
That's a really cool and special idea to serve the community. How can somebody access it if they're in need and access it if they want to donate things?
So if they're in need, you just have to show up. Um, if you can't, if you can't get into our office door, again, like we are Monday through Friday, nine to five. And sometimes DJ and I and, and my field operation manager, everybody's out of the office at the same time doing different things. Um, so don't, if we're not in the office, don't worry about it. There's a side door and then, um, other doors to get into the main hallway and you can just access the closet from there. It's always open when the building's open. Um, and then for donations, we are, because there are times where everybody's out, we ask that people contact us ahead of time and make an appointment. So we make sure that you're not making a trip all the way out there for no reason.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a really awesome project and I'm glad to hear that that's happening. And so on top of all the things that you're doing, you have decided to toss your name in the hat for the Manhattan City Commission.
Yeah.
Why has that been something that's important to dedicate more time to and run for office?
So previously I had worked on Fanny Fane's, Fanny Fang's campaign for, um, county commission. Um, she lost by an incredibly small margin. Um, and so when we, when our mayor resigned for reasons, when our mayor resigned for reasons, uh, we needed another commissioner. And so Fanny put her name in the hat. Um, that night she came, she presented her case and she had actually said, well, you know, what does it take to get on the ballot? So she went and collected. It takes fifty signatures to get on the ballot. She collected over eighty and she had a map and showed where all of their addresses were to say like, this isn't just in my neighborhood or in my area, this is across the entire city. Um, and they ended up, uh, you know, that night, not even acknowledging her existence. Um, and so that was kind of crazy to me. Um, and then I went to the next one and the commissioner that was accepted for the role, um, spent her first night in office fussing at our fire chief for this two hundred thousand dollar expense. And that expense was to replace the tornado sirens in Northview. Um, the tornado sirens that are in Northview at the time were forty years old. They were gifted to us forty years ago by the Army Corps of Engineers. So we didn't even pay for them in the first place. Um, and so it was, it was just time to replace them. Um, it's about two hundred thousand dollars. Our fire equipment reserve fund is actually kind of low. It's under a million. And if you want one fire truck, that is bare minimum, one point one million dollars. Uh, nowadays they're very specialized machines, um, and they have a lot of specialized equipment. Uh, so I, I was just shocked by it. Um, I, it hit that intersection of like, I live in Northview and also we're fussing at a fire chief. So as a former firefighter, I'm like, no, leave the chief alone. Um, but it also came down and I, I went to the meeting after that for public comments and like, I was like, hey, like, you complained about an expense in a high-density, low-income neighborhood, a, a food desert on a flood plain, where most of the residents live in mobile homes in tornado alley? Not three weeks after a woman died in Westmoreland because the sirens didn't go off in time. And so that was really impactful to me. So I was like, well, you know, the city's gonna keep doing things that I like just cannot get behind. Um, then I, I, I have time. I don't have kids. Um, after the motorcycle accident, I can't have kids. Um, and, uh, as a business owner, one of the things, I don't pay myself a lot of the business, but one of the things that I recognize is incredibly valuable is I have control over my time. Um, so I was like, yeah, I, I have time. I'll, I'll just keep coming. Um, and my goal originally was to run somebody else's campaign. Um, but when an amazing candidate didn't come forward, a lot of my friends were just like, Amber, Amber, it's you.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's you. And I was like, fine, okay, I'll do it.
Can you talk a little bit about Northview? Because you also mentioned on your website that you, you live in a, so the words on your website are, you live in a co-op in Northview, which is the food desert on a flood plain, plain that many of Manhattan's working class call home.
Yeah.
Can you tell us a little bit more about Northview and what that means?
Yeah, so Northview is the small working class community under the dam. Um, there are hundreds and hundreds of people who live in multiple, uh, mobile home parks in the area. Um, there's an apartment complex or two. One of them has raised the rent four hundred dollars a month in the last two years, which is completely unattainable for many families. Um, and so, uh, living there, I love living there. Um, I live in the little, little Prairie Glen co-op there in the co-op. Um, one of the things I love about it is like, we know all of the kids by name. Their parents have given us permission to fuss at them if they're doing something stupid, um, which is going to happen because like some of them are like nine or ten years old. They get to run around in a little feral pack. It's fantastic. Um, summertime is always interesting.
Yeah.
Um, we, like, you know, we go for a walk around the neighborhood and we know who our neighbors are and we say hi to them and we get to hang out with their dogs. Like, it's fantastic. We swap, uh, like, you know, a lot of us will garden, we'll swap vegetables with each other. Um, it's just like a very, uh, community oriented way to live. And that's how things were for me growing up in the deep south. Um, like my granddaddy had this huge like wash basin, um, out front of the shop and he would just bring vegetables because everything he grew, he had a very, very green thumb. Everything he grew overproduced. Um, and so I even went later, uh, I met somebody who had delivered parts to his store while he was in college. Um, and he goes, I heard this all the time growing up, oh, well, you're Ed Houston's granddaughter, aren't you? Everybody was, you know, in the community, kind of like localized by our position to granddaddy. Um, and so he was like, yeah, if granddaddy hadn't have fed me those vegetables, I wouldn't have seen a single vegetable in college. Like I was running on mashed potatoes and ramen. Um, and like thanks to him, I actually had good food to eat.
Yeah, so the community really resonates with you.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. Well, like growing up, because now everybody's like, oh my gosh, you shouldn't stop for people if they're on the side of the road. Like, growing up, like if you didn't stop for people by the side of the road, it was because you were a bad person, obviously. Um, and so, yeah, times have changed, but those are the ideals that like I grew up with.
Yeah. And so now you're several months into running a campaign. What is one thing that you wish the public knew about running a campaign to be an elected official?
I need the public to register to vote and then actually vote. Um, I'm seeing like our registration numbers. Um, I'm seeing so, because on the backend of things, I can actually plug in and be like, okay, how many people actually voted in these last two municipal elections, the city level elections? Um, and the answer is not very many. Um, so yeah, if you really want the government to do what you want and, um, run a campaign that is by and for the people, you actually have to show up to the polls, not just once, but consistently, um, so that they know that they can count on you.
Yeah, voting matters. Twenty percent of registers, but registered voters showing up to vote is not enough.
It's not enough. It's not enough. And if you, and that's, I mean, it can be very disheartening, especially as a millennial, like I woke up in this world and I was a kid when nine eleven happened. Like I was literally in elementary school. Um, and then the next thing was the two thousand eight housing crash and the recession that followed. And it's been just like terrible thing after terrible thing after terrible thing growing up. Um, and like two thousand eleven was when super PACs were born. And so it feels, that was when I graduated high school, so I was like eighteen and now super PACs are born. And so like voting just feels like this thing that doesn't work for normal people anymore, but it does if you make it.
Yeah, if you show up and, and vote.
Yeah, yeah.
And so I have three questions that I end every interview with.
Mm-hmm.
Um, do you remember the first time you voted?
I do, yeah.
Tell us a little bit about it.
So the first time I voted because it was in Tallahassee and it was like a much larger district. Oh, it was so nerve wracking. I was just a kid. Thank God there are like poll worker volunteers everywhere and they are all very, very kind. That's another thing I would tell people, like, if you're able to volunteer at the polls, um, everybody there is some of the nicest human beings I've ever met. And they will just take you under their wing and be like, okay, you are my niece now. Congratulations. I'm gonna walk you through this process. You will be fine. But yeah, it was, and I remember like the line was out the door and down the street. Um, and people were still like that committed to doing it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was amazing.
And why is voting important to you?
Again, because if you, if you want a seat at the table and you want a voice and you want politicians to actually cater to you and listen to you, then you have to, you gotta hold the leash. And that's how you do it is you grab them by the ballot.
Yeah.
Hold that leash.
So show up and vote again. And how can people find you and connect with you?
Yeah, so I'm doing some really fun connecting with people on Facebook. Um, I have an Instagram, but I am, I don't know, maybe I'm gonna show my age, but I'm so tired of having social media platforms. I have so many messaging platforms too, like it's getting kind of exhausting. So find me on Facebook. Um, you can connect me, with me over email and then my campaign website is very well set up, StarlingforMHK.com.
Great. And I'll wrap us up with, you can follow us on our social media pages for announcements for new episodes. You can follow the podcast on Instagram at Politics Not Included or Transparent Campaigns. Our Facebook page is Transparent Campaign Initiative. And if you want more information for the upcoming Manhattan City Commission election this November, visit our website, transparentcampaigns.org. Amber, thank you so much for taking the time to join us today.
Thank you. Thank you for doing this. It's really great.